10:14, business meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board to order. Our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Kristi.
Rick Kimball.
Here.
Nancy McMorris-Ottox.
Here.
Chris Brantley.
Here.
Jeff Favel.
Here.
Jim Green.
Here.
Paul Kylo.
Here.
Chuck Lee.
Here.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, agenda modifications, we have none in front of us tonight, so the agenda is as presented in the board plate. Our first, our next order of business is spotlights on success. Superintendent Perry.
Good evening, and we'll have Karina Lee as our first presenter for our spotlights tonight.
Good evening, I'd like to invite Kristi Fletcher, Lisa Buick, Justine Christensen from Claggett Creek Middle School, and their principal, Rob Schoper, to join Chairman Kimball, Kristi Perry. Claggett Creek Middle School's Parent Club Board, President Kristi Fletcher, Vice President Lisa Buick, and Treasurer Justine Christensen were nominated and selected as the November Volunteers of the Month. These board members were nominated by the entire Claggett Creek Middle School staff for various reasons. They have been instrumental in working with the staff in supporting parent involvement at Claggett Creek, and have volunteered tireless hours in soliciting parent and community feedback to support a strong parent club. Kristi, Lisa, and Justine, turn your certificates out, there you go.[130.03][130.03](Laughter). Networked with numerous community and business organizations to provide high-interest topics for families attending the parent club meetings. Presentations have included how to be a tech-savvy parent, and college and career readiness. They've also showcased various student-focused programs like the Kaiser Police Cadets, the Kaiser Fire Department Explorer Program, and the McNary Junior ROTC Program. This fall, the parent club organized and implemented the very first annual Claggett Creek Community Fall Festival, which included a Kaiser's Got Talent competition. These events generated $5,000 to support Claggett Creek teachers, students, and programs. Congratulations. The Claggett Creek staff and community would like to acknowledge Kristi, Lisa, and Justine, Mr. Schoper, sounds like you've got a dream team going on here, for their volunteerism, their leadership, and their commitment in supporting the vision for college and career readiness for every student at Claggett Creek Middle School.
Go Kaiser.
All right, next we have Jay Reme for the Business Partner of the Month.
Thank you Superintendent Perry, Chair Kimball, and members of the board. If Larry Miles could come forward along with Liberty Elementary Principal Bill Whitman, and please join the board chair, and did Christine Walton from Crossler make it? I know she was possible and possibly not. Our Business Partner of the Month is Windermere Pacific West Properties. Larry Miles is here today, Windermere Broker is here today to accept the recognition. Windermere Pacific West Properties through the Windermere Foundation has been a great supporter of Salem Kaiser Schools for several years. In fact, a portion of every agent's check goes to the foundation to help those in need in our community. In past years, they have helped with donations of Thanksgiving baskets, holiday gifts, backpacks, and glasses for students, as well as school supplies for teachers at Liberty and Wright Elementary Schools and at Crossler Middle School. Staff members from Windermere have been guest speakers in the schools for Career Day and have supported the Howke Middle School Family Dinner Night for over 10 years. We have heard from a couple of schools already this year letting us know of the generosity of Windermere's giving to their students. Windermere donated 30 backpacks full of school supplies to Liberty Elementary and provided six pairs of shoes for students at Crossler Middle School, which helped many needy students have a great start to the school year. The donations are very much appreciated. Liberty Elementary reports more than 60 percent of their students are from economically disadvantaged families, and Crossler Middle School reports 37 percent. Leona Wyatt and Ashley Arminikas help coordinate Windermere's giving and are always willing to help whenever they are contacted by staff from our schools. Salem Kaiser Schools staff, students, and community are thankful and feel fortunate to have the support of Windermere Pacific West Properties and the Windermere Foundation. Congratulations as our Business Partner of the Month.
All right, our last spotlight is presented by Kathleen Hanneman.
I invite John Williams and Principal Ken Phillips up to the front. Chairperson Kimball, members of the board, Superintendent Perry. It's with great pleasure we honor John Williams tonight, West Salem High School's science teacher. John Williams was awarded the OSTA Outstanding Classroom Teacher Award for Region Two by the Oregon Science Teachers Association at their annual awards banquet held in Portland on October 10th. John was nominated by Lori Lancaster, a former chemistry teacher from Centennial High School in Gresham, and a past OSTA president. The award winners are selected based on their ability to motivate student achievement and excitement in science, community administrative support, ability to support and mentor new and pre-service teachers, and for their overall contribution to the profession. John's nominator stated that he was nominated to recognize his work in the classroom as a result of his experience with the Partners in Science Program, as well as for his contribution as one of the mentors to the team at West Salem High School who won the National Toshiba Explorer Vision Competition.
All right, the next agenda item is audience communications on items that are on our agenda tonight. We have two people have signed up to speak. First is Rita Glass. We have three minutes set aside for testimony, so if you give your name and address for the record and go ahead.
Good evening Superintendent Perry and school board members. My name is Rita Glass, and I reside at 4384 Falcon View Way Northeast here in Salem, Oregon. And I am here on behalf of the Association for Salem Kaiser Educational Support Professionals, and we would like to thank you for the proclamation and acknowledging the important role of our ESPs in Salem Kaiser School District. And so, on behalf of all our members, thank you. Tomorrow is our day, so I thank you for that. And we brought you some gifts, some mask ESP pens, so that you remember who we are. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rita. Next is Brian Sund.
Superintendent Perry, school board members. My name is Brian Sund, I reside at 582 Rural Avenue South Salem, Oregon. I'm speaking also in recognition of all educational support personnel who serve in this district in regards to the proclamation to be announced shortly. Specifically, though, I want to call out those instructional assistants and the specialists who work with students with special needs. I retired from Salem Kaiser in 2011 after 27 years as a Developmental Learning Center, DLC, teacher at South Salem High School. Prior to that, four years of private and state special ed experience. I'm now in my fourth year as a substitute in the district, primarily in special ed. I can honestly tell you that in all experiences, if not for the dedication and the commitment of the staff in my classrooms, as well as those specialists and consultants who provided the time and the effort and the thoughtful insight into our students, I would have been lost. True, it does require extra bodies, extra hands, extra brains to keep a special ed classroom functioning at a proper level, but it's the compassion and the love for those students and what our instructional assistants see as potential and ultimately reality that would keep me focused on my ultimate goal as a teacher and a case manager. Over the past six weeks, many of the district's educational support personnel were recognized for their achievements with Crystal Apple nominations, and several more were honored, or several were honored last Thursday as recipients. I can guarantee you that there are so many more out there equally deserving, and it does not need to be a district employee to make a nomination. Anyone can do so. Take your pick, there are many to choose from. And speaking of Crystal Apple, just a little ad here, one of last year's recipients, Chef Todd Wywick, South High Culinary Arts, asked me to spread the word on their bistro night this coming Friday, the final one before winter break. Last month's event was truly outstanding, the students pulled out all the stops to share their epicureal skills. You will not be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, that's all that have signed up to speak on agenda items. Was there anybody who did not get a chance to sign up to speak on an agenda item that would like to? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to action items. We have two tonight. I'll turn this over to Superintendent Perry.
All right, the first action item is the National Education Support Professionals Day proclamation, and do you want to read the proclamation before we take action?
Yes, I will. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, and whereas education support professionals are an integral part of the education process, and whereas educational support professionals provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students, and whereas education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, now therefore, the Salem Kaiser School Board of the Salem Kaiser School District do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 19th, 2014, as National Education Support Professionals Day. I urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of education support professionals in our public schools. I'll entertain a motion to accept this resolution. Nancy, you moved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion, comments? Chris.
I always, when I read through this proclamation, I always, for the group that's here in Salem Kaiser, just my experience in the last five years on the board, is that the word professionalism pops out at me, because a lot of folks think of support professionals not in that way, and I just want to assure everybody that every major effort that I have seen this district undertake in the last five years, if it hasn't been led by the educational support professionals, they have been right there at the table, ready to go, and being leaders in that process. I just can't say enough for the group that we have here and the kinds of work they put into the various changes that our district has to go through either by law or by the right thing to do. So, I just need to say that every year when we get to this proclamation, because I'm amazed by them.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, Kristi. I want to thank all our educational.[866.64][866.64](Applause). So tomorrow is Educational Support Professionals Day, and let's all honor them. Thank you very much, all you employees. All right, our next bit.
Our next action item is the authorization of the issuance and sale of pension obligation bonds, and I want to remind you of a couple things. I know a couple of you have gotten a few questions, but you have heard this once in a work session on August 26th. Again, in September, we had our first reading of this policy, and as a reminder, we are refinancing a debt that we already have, so we are not borrowing against our PERS, we are just refinancing a debt that we already have. You have done this two other times as a school board, or at least the Salem Kaiser School Board, I'm not sure that any of you were here at the time, but once in 2002, and again in 2004, and as a result of the kind of foresight and the fiscal planning of that board, you've saved the district about $67.7 million in that time by the refinancing of this effort. So during some really tough economic times, they could have been a lot tougher by the, except that we had this refinancing of PERS. So if you think about the cuts that you made, imagine if you had to make that many more in cuts. We have contracted, as we told you previously, with an outside expert to give us the probability of the success of this refinancing, and they, that was Eco Northwest, and what they would say is that you have about an 85% probability that the district would benefit financially from the transaction if the true interest cost of the bonds is at 4.5%, and 78% probability if it's at, the true interest cost is at 5.5%. What we're recommending is a 5.25% true interest cost is that limit. We're also recommending that we finance $51,450,37. That's the amount of our Tier One and Two and our OPSERP unfunded liability. That number was a lot greater when you initially looked at the number, but this is since our PERS rates have come out, this is the actual number. So what we're recommending is the 5.25% for the 55, or $51.4 million in this resolution tonight. So what additional questions do you have tonight? Chris.
I'm one of the ones that got a call, and the primary reason for that call, I believe, is the headline of the article that was in the paper yesterday morning. The headline implied that we were borrowing money to pay the pensions of our employees, and even though you just answered that pretty clearly, I think, I just wanted to bring that up and make sure that we all understand that this is not funding the pensions, if you think of it as borrowing money to pay people's pensions, it's simply that PERS is in, has an unfunded actuarial liability is their term for it, and that we are financing our ability to pay our part of that unfunded liability, and by financing it upfront, we actually end up paying less than if we pay for it over the time of that unfunded liability. I think the article in the paper made that clear, I think you've made that clear, but the headline certainly didn't, so I thought it was important to say that before we vote on this.
I think you got it right. Yes.
So, I'm understanding this authorization in this resolution to say that if the true interest cost would exceed 5.25%, we would not sell those bonds in the bond market at that time.
That is correct.
Secondly, in previous iterations of this, when the district did it, we did it with a lot of other school districts. There was a huge pool that went out and did this. Are we pooling with other school districts, or is this just Salem Kaiser doing it on its own?
Just Salem Kaiser doing it on its own. And just as a point of clarification, too, in 2002, the true interest cost that was borrowed against was 5.6, and in 2004, it was 5.49. So we're actually recommending a lower true interest cost than what was previously borrowed. Jeff, did you have a question, or did we get them?
That was my question that you just answered.
Okay, I'm glad I could anticipate your question.
Okay, we, are you done with your presentation?
Yes, unless there's additional questions.
Okay, we have a recommendation from staff to proceed on this action item. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Paul, second by Chuck. All right, and that's to approve the action, correct? Okay. Any more discussion, questions, on this item? Okay, we'll take a vote. We have a motion and a second to approve the authorization and issuance and sale of pension obligation bonds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition, that's unanimous, Kristi. All right, that's our two action items for tonight. Next, we'll go to the consent calendar. As part of our business, we have items under the Business Section and Personnel Section tonight, and is there any items that a board member wishes to pull for further discussion? Otherwise, we will. Okay, you want to take.
I just have a couple of general questions.
4B, okay. And I actually want to pull 4A, so.
No, okay.
We will not have a consent calendar tonight. So I'll go first on 4A. This is the grants, grant budgets, and I mainly wanted to just highlight the second one, which is on the first page there, about high school graduation initiative grant of $2 million. I know in our presentation last month of the results, on the results of last year, we have not yet received, as of that report, we hadn't received a graduation rate for last year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. But our graduation rate has been going down over the years.
That is correct.
And.
Wait, graduation rate going up?
Yeah.
Dropout rate going down.
It's been going positive, whatever.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you're right. And I guess my big question is, what impact, this, we've gotten this grant over several years, I take it, and what impact does this grant have for us on that type of, on that number and how it's moved is my big question. I should have asked this earlier, so you'd be prepared.
That's okay, I think we have it. So, I'll tell you generally, and then I'm going to ask Kelly to fill in if I miss something, but we have a number of positions that are funded and a number of programs that are funded out of this grant, and since this is the fifth year of the grant, we've got to decide, do those programs, are those positions, those programs so critical to us in lowering the dropout rate, do we need to move them into the general fund? So it's programs like the graduation coaches that we have at high schools, sophomore connections, some of our summer school transition programs, eighth grade into high school, drop teen parent is another one that's funded out of this. So those are some pretty critical programs that we have identified have lowered the dropout rate and increased graduation rates, and so we've got to think about this in terms of how do we build that into a general fund budget moving forward.
Thanks, you answered my second question, which was, in the upcoming budget, what, okay. That's what I wanted to ask about, so, Chris.
So my clarifying question is, that means that this is the fifth year and the last year of this grant?
And the last year of this grant.
That was my question, too.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the grants budget part of our consent calendar, which is item 4A1.
So moved.
So moved by Paul, second by Jeff? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous, Kristi? The second item was personnel items. Paul, you.
Just a couple of quick questions. I guess, just go to Kristi. On number three, the, are these people, the less than half-time teachers, are they in, are they in probationary positions, contract positions, or temporary positions?
That is a good question, I'm not 100% sure if I know the answer to that, I'm looking at Ken. Did you hear the question?
Yeah, we'd have to look it up by individual. We can get it for you if you like.
Please.
Just don't have it tonight.
Please, because, I mean, I do know some of these folks, and they've been contract teachers with the district in the past, and so their positions, it's curious to me why they're here and where they're going. Okay, the second question, when you look at, when I look at four and five, I guess this goes probably to Ken as well, is why are these people on the temporary teacher list? When I look at six, seven, and eight, and I see those people are going into probationary or contract positions, how do you make the determination as to whether I get a potentially contract position, or I'm limited to temporary? I mean, at this point, time of the year, why are they one or the other and not all the same?
Yeah, I see, I see what your question is between the two.
Yeah, and on this one, usually this is a employee who's been increased temporarily because of funding source, so, for example.
You asterisk those people, but there are those who are not asterisked, or not marked. I mean, I don't, I know we're not going to use names, but if you look at your list, the very last name on five, that's someone that's, why are they temporary as opposed to probationary?
It could be a lot of reason, it'd have to be an individual question on each person, so we'd have to look that up for you.
So let me tell you generally, and I, but I understand where your question's coming from, and I don't think I have the answer. So generally, if a position is funded out of a grant, it would be a temporary position or hired before a certain point in the school year, but when I'm looking at this, I don't think I can clearly delineate the difference, so.
I can't.
Yeah.
And I've worked this. It could be these for years, and I can't tell you the difference.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking the question, how do we know? What, how is one person chosen and another person not? Is this a preference of some sort, or is there a rubric, or what makes the difference? I just want general, I don't need specifics.
So.
What do you choose?
So people who don't have an asterisk.
Yeah.
Are hired normally into a temporary position. So a temporary position could be temporary funding source, right?
Okay.
Or it could be a date of hire that is after a certain point in the fall, and so historically, after a certain date in the fall, if we hire someone into a position, we also designate them as a temporary position. And so the people who have an asterisk are already with us as a contract employee, and they've been increased to full-time. The others are generally people who have not been working, but now they are hired into a temporary position.
Okay, so if I look at six, seven, and eight, why are those people now in, on probationary schedules as opposed to the temporary schedule, not knowing their date of hire, I guess?
So let me ask a question. Will this hold you up from voting on this?
No, I would just like to know the answer.
So let me come back to you with the answer, because I, I understand the question.
All right.
But I don't think we have the answer.
Okay.
Okay, so entertain a motion on personnel actions.
So moved.
Take a second. Second by, moved by Jim, second by Jeff to accept the personal actions as written in the consent calendar of item 4B1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, passage unanimous, Luke, Kristi. All right, our next area on the agenda is readings, and we have two areas tonight for readings. The first is resolutions regarding the Oregon School Board Association. These are our first readings tonight. We would take action on this item in December, and I guess I'd like to ask Director Green maybe to walk us through these resolutions, these things he could share with us.
Sure.
I heard you'd agreed to maybe do that.
Yeah, I had. So the first resolution that's before you is the adoption of the 2015 Oregon School Boards Association Legislative Priorities and Policies. That was created by the Legislative Policy Committee, which Director Morris-Ottox and Director Brantley sit on as representatives for the Marion region. After two weekends of work in polling our membership and making some changes, and then having it go before the board, it's now out for discussion and adoption by the membership, so that's resolution number one. Resolution number two is to modify the OSB Constitution, and that takes a vote of the membership to do so, on the adoption of the legislative policies. Over the years, the Constitution's been amended, and finally, some very sharp-eyed staff at the Oregon School Boards Association caught the issue of, we're currently not adopting it in the manner that we're doing it, and we don't have the adoption meeting at the annual convention anymore, it's done through the process. I just explained on the previous one, this is to bring practice into conformity with what's in the Constitution. The final resolution is dealing with the election of board members and members of the Legislative Policy Committee. We sometimes have difficulty finding individuals from the regions around the state willing to serve. One of the regions that we have some difficulty is the one right west of us, the Yamhill-Polk region, and sometimes it's very difficult to recruit folks to serve. After the board held a lengthy discussion, and the Governance Committee looked at it, they thought that we ought to ask the membership if you should be able to appoint a contiguous region member if no one is willing to serve either through signing up or after recruitment by the board to try to do that. So that's the third resolution, to get a full board and a full Legislative Policy Committee if we have trouble doing so. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Director Green or Director. Any questions of Director Green or Directors Brantley or McMorris Oticks?
Right, I have a question.
Go ahead, Nancy.
On these different items for the OSBA, is our vote a vote as a board? The board is the membership, not us as individuals?
Yes, the board is, the board is the vote.
And district boards on resolutions are weighted depending on the number of students they have in their school district. As it relates to candidates for either the board or LPC, it's one vote, one board. This board has more weighted votes on resolutions because we have a higher ADMW count of students versus other school districts in the state.
Thank you.
Now, we've got these resolutions to take action on next month. We also, I thought we had a board, a board seat to, to take action on it. Taz Morrison, is her term up?
Director Kimball, that will be at the December meeting.
We will do, so we didn't do a first reading on that, which is...
It's not a resolution.
Yeah, we don't.
All right, we're good then, thank you. All right, that's the first reading. The second one has to do with revisions to our board policies. At our summer planning retreat on August the 12th, we reviewed all of the, all of the policies and discussed the potential for revisions on several of them. The board directed staff to work directly with board leadership to craft recommended revisions based on our discussion. The following revised policies are attached, with new language underlined and language to be removed struck out. And the changes that we are suggesting are contained in BG three, which is Board Member's Code of Conduct; BG four, Board Member's Conflict of Interest; BG six, Governing Style; BG seven, Monitoring Governance Process and Board Staff Linkages; BG nine, which is Agenda Planning; BG eleven, Budget Committee Job Description, which is a, is a new policy that we've, we've drafted. So that would be a new policy in our policy governance structure. We had recommended change to Executive Limitation Number Six, Staff Evaluation. And then under Board Staff Linkages Number One, there's some changes to global governance. And lastly, Board Staff Linkages Number Three, Monitoring the Superintendent's Performance. All of those board policies attached here in the plate have some minor or perhaps major revisions. And we also discussed at our, our retreat in August, revisions, potential revisions to the results policy. And board leadership and meeting with staff, we've decided to schedule several words, work sessions around that topic, beginning on January the 27th. So what Nancy and I have come back with after working with staff is the suggested changes attached here. I'm not going to go through each of the policies at this point, and, but if you want to discuss any of them at this point, this is a good time. This is a first reading, we won't be taking action until next month. So are there any questions or discussion? Paul?
I believe BG six...
BG six?
Three, aye. I don't believe that that is appropriate. I don't believe that change is, makes our, will make our meetings more effective or efficient. And it is, I don't believe I, that a member has to give a reason for how they vote, especially if the other points within this section are being met. Because under that, I could be stating the same thing over that Jim has said, Chuck has said, you have said, Nancy has said, Chris has said, and Jeff has said. And I would be required by that language, as it's currently construed and written, that I would have to say that. Even if, if I agree with all of you, we all have to continue saying it, which I believe is not the intent of that language. But I do believe that is the ultimate result of that language. So I would hope that we would strike that language when it comes time to vote on this item.
Okay. Chris?
I have, I, I just have a reaction to that, and then, and then I have another question that I wanted to talk about. My reaction to that is that, I think that came from a discussion that we've had where there, sometimes we'll take a vote, and as we walk out, there'll be people scratching their head as to why did that vote happen? Why did somebody do what they did? And I think that's a reaction to that. I agree with you that the way it's worded is going to, could end up being, an awful lot of wind being blown around for no good reason, but...
I assure you, if it's passed, it will create that.
Yeah, and so my question is, could you offer a, a different way of getting at the issue of that we are all well informed about what we're all thinking, you know, when we take votes? And so that, you don't need to do that now, I'm just asking that maybe we would have some alternative wording to that, so that it doesn't create the problem you're having, but still allows us all to be able to be cognizant of what we're all thinking. The one that I really wanted to talk about was the extensive addition of language around members' conflict of interest. And I actually appreciate that it's all in there, because we, seems like several times we have come into various votes, and we've been asking Paul Decopoulos on the spot to explain to us what conflict of interest is and how we, whether or not we have a potential one there. And so I, I appreciate that language, I just wanted to say that I think it's a good thing to have it in there.
Nancy, just a minute. Chris, on the conflict of interest, we, it was, some of the changes were actually briefer, but then we handed it to Paul Decopoulos.
It got long.
It became what it is, which is, is a good statement, so. Nancy?
I wanted to go back to Paul's comments. And just hope that we can craft language that meets the goal. I feel like when we're deliberating an issue, and most of the comments about that issue are in one direction, and then the vote is taken, and there are votes in the opposite direction, yet we've not heard any conversation about what, what the individual or individuals are thinking. And it doesn't give the rest of us the opportunity to understand what those thoughts or concerns are that may make some of us think differently about, about an issue. And that it improves the quality of the conversation and debate, if we can think of, of a way to state that, that would achieve that same goal.
Paul?
I, I don't believe that it's under any parliamentary authority that requires a person to give their reasoning as to how they vote. At least none of the parliamentary books I've ever read have indicated that. And the one example your, I believe, was cited at our retreat followed a 52-point email that outlined the, the position that was taken and why. And at the meeting where the vote was taken, there was no comment, because the 52-point email had already been shared with everyone by the then-acting superintendent. And the email could have been read again, because the points were still valid, if that's what you want, but that doesn't add to the effectiveness of the meeting and the communication that had already been given. So I am not, I, I don't see the need for this language. I believe if the spirit and the intent of A through J minus I are met, then I don't know why we need any language there at all that discusses how we're going to vote, or why we voted.
I just want to clarify that if an example was brought up at the retreat, I don't remember that an example was brought up, and I, I don't think that it was referring to one specific instance. I think it's, I, I just think the quality of the conversation is better if we understand where people are coming from. And I don't know that, I, I think this board can set what its standards of behavior are. And that's the purpose of the document, to say that's what we expect of one another in, in our governance.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Paul?
I again reiterate, I believe that if we are required to share our reasoning, and we have to repeat what everyone, what other people have said, then we are going to make our meetings longer, and that they're going to take forever. I don't believe that this is efficient, I don't believe it's right.
Can I ask a question?
Go, go ahead.
I think in some ways, you, well, maybe it's just a statement, you might both be saying the same thing. And, and if it's the will of everyone on the board that you want something in here about this, it might be that you want to be sure if there's a no vote, that some, that somehow in the, the challenge comes in the discussion before the vote, it really isn't about the vote. I think is what Paul's saying, but I also think that's what Nancy wants, but...
Jeff, do you have any?
Just on a policy level, I'm not in favor of requiring somebody give their reason. I think that it's a good thing to do, but I would not support, support requiring it. For a number of reasons. Part of it is that people, we all have, I think that oftentimes people have reasons beyond what they state, because you don't state every single rationale. And so since you don't state every reason, there shouldn't be any requirement to state a, a valid reason for a no vote.
Jim, do you?
Just, Mr. Chair, just something to think about, and maybe it's something for board leadership to take back and discuss. In most instances where these are found is in operating agreements for boards, rather than in board policy. And I do agree with Paul that this has the ability to really make our meetings ineffective. And I would use the, the resolution that we just voted on for our support professionals. We all support the support professionals, but I don't think every school board member needed to say exactly what you said in wrapping up. Maybe it's an opportunity for us to talk about an operating agreement with the board, rather than putting it into our board policy, something for board leadership to think about. And I do have a question on another one, if you want to move on to the...
Before we leave this one, and we'll take these comments and, and figure out what to do about it. But part of what I see this trying to help out with is the team building on the board. If we, if, if we don't share, if we're opposite of the others and we don't share what we're thinking, or, or why we're thinking that way, it, to me, it's not a team building thing, it's, it, it's, it doesn't help the team. I like to see everybody contribute, even if it's the opposite direction of everyone else, to, to know where we're all at. If, if we take the letter of all this, we'll never adhere to three, where is it?
Correct.
Three F, not repeat what has already been said during a meeting?
Correct.
I mean, you know, we, we do that, and we're going to do that. And even if this ends up in policy, this is an encouragement to share our reasonings, it may not happen. And, and if I'm sitting in this seat, I'm not going to sit there and say, Chuck, you've got to share why you voted no and all of us voted yes. It's, it's, I, I understand what you're saying, Paul, I'm just...
Mr. Chair, you would have to, under this.
Well, we don't do it under, under three, these, we better change some of these other guidelines.
But I, but if I voted no, I would have the right to share, vent my spleen all night long about why I voted no, and some of you who on this board know me, know I will.
All right, let's move on. Jim?
Could I ask a, just a quick clarified question? Jim referred to operating agreements. It's always been my understanding that these are our operating agreements, that, that under policy governance, this is where we define how we agree to work with one another.
That's right. That's the way I've always looked at it as well. Jim?
So, yeah, I just have a quick question, if someone could help me, and I'm just not seeing it in my first read and my second read and my third read. And it's monitoring the superintendent's performance, BSL dash three. On the second page, under number six, sub B, sub little two, aye? That's where, under the executive limitations, if something has happened after we've heard that, we hear it back from the superintendent. I understand we're taking it out of the evaluation process, but we're not taking that out of the requirement of executive limitation reporting. I just want to make sure that if something has changed after we receive that executive limitation report, like, you know, tonight they're going to talk about staff compensation and professional development, and two months from now we change, we're still going to get that, we're just not going to use it in your evaluation tool, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure we weren't deleting it from a requirement. I didn't think we were, but I just wanted to double check.
Okay, good question. Anything else on the policies tonight? Okay, we'll take into consideration some of the comments and bring this back for action at the December meeting. See, that's it for readings tonight. Next is reports, we have two. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Perry.
All right, the first report, I'll report, it's Executive Limitation Number Five, Staff Compensation and Professional Development. This is the fifth of 12 monitoring reports scheduled for 1415, and is designed to provide the school board with information to determine if the superintendent is meeting the criteria established when the, within the adopted executive limitations. So the first one is staff compensation. Shall not change his or her compensation benefits. And as we look back to last year, there's no evidence of noncompliance. Promise or imply employment to any person in a matter that is outside of the district's established procedures or statutory requirements. No evidence of noncompliance. Create obligations over a longer term than revenues can prudently be projected. There's multiple evidences of compliance, especially our collective bargaining agreements, but no evidence of noncompliance. Fail to develop and implement salary schedules and pay plans for employees were developed and they've been implemented, and no evidence of noncompliance. Fail to develop and implement compensation and professional development plans to attract and retain highly qualified staff. We do have a compensation study for our classified employees that we will bring to you in a work session. We continue to have tuition reimbursement, Academy for Teaching and Learning, the Mentor Induction Program, the Teacher Incentive Fund. And we are completing our class and our TIF project work, Continued Strengthening Support for our Mentor Project, and continued work with the Salem Kaiser Clinical Collaborative Project. One of the topics that wasn't listed here is that, as a joint labor management group, ASK ESP, Salem Kaiser Education Association and District Administration, we're working on the topic of professional development as one of our key topics in PACE for the year. So that's another thing that we'll be sure to strengthen that PD. So as per the evidence referenced, districts in compliance with executive limitation number five.
Okay, I'll remind the board that executive limitations are part of what we use to evaluate the superintendent's performance. That will not be the case on Dr. Perry's, Superintendent Perry's first year, since this happened prior to her, so. But are there any questions or discussion on this one? I'll go with Nancy, and then Jim, and then Paul.
Can you just remind me what the Salem Kaiser Clinical Collaborative Project is?
I can. The collaborative project is a joint venture between, and it started out with chalkboard as well, but between university partners and our school district. And we put teachers in classrooms, and we train the classroom teacher in clinical supervision, and the pre-service teacher teaches with that teacher all year long. And so we have this relationship with the university partners established, especially in our Lit Squared and bilingual programs. It's our training ground to get them in our methods and also our recruitment strategy. So, and the, and the, the schools are Yoshikai, Chavez, Hammond, Battle Creek, Hoover, Waldo, Stevens, and McKay.
Jim?
So on your report, under five, you say that tuition reimbursement funding is available for staff and to claim each, and I, I think that's fantastic, I think it's great. To what level of penetration do we have that? Is it, is it a level of penetration, or is it a fund that we've set aside? I know we do it by level, but, and you don't have to get it to me tonight, you can get it to me in an email, because I'm assuming you probably don't have that. But it's, I'm assuming it's very well utilized, and I would hope it's very well utilized.
Yeah, and let me get you the information, unless Ken has it off the top, the Professional Development Fund?
Yeah, let's research that, we can let you know about usage.
That's perfectly fine.
It's used at a high level.
Thank you.
Okay, yep.
My question was just how much is in the fund?
And do you have the answer for how much is in the fund? Or you want to...
I can get that for you.
Okay, we'll put all that as follow-up.
Okay, I mean, is it broken down per person, or is it just a, you apply?
It's a lump sum. I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Have consensus around this executive limitation? Thank you. Okay, the second report has to do with progress report on activities related to strategic plan, and...
All right, a progress report on the activities related to the strategic plan will be with Ken Partial tonight. And Ken, are you having Brett come up with you?
Oh, Kristi's getting my thing, Ken? Yep.
I'm joined by Brett Cheever, our Coordinator of Staff Quality. And it's my honor to report on strategic plan number five. Chair Kimball, Superintendent Perry, and Directors. Strategic Plan Number Five is, Brett, do you want to kind of click along with me there? Just continue the evaluation processes to recognize and enhance employee growth effectiveness and performance. And tonight I'm going to focus on our implementation progress of Senate Bill 290, definitely related to the Oregon ESEA waiver, which is the waiver of the old NCLB rules. And so our state, sparked by the Senate Bill 290, was asked to implement a new evaluation program for teachers and administrators, so all districts must implement this. It has five common components, standards of professional practice, differentiated performance level, multiple measures of performance, evaluation and professional growth cycle, and aligned professional development. And while many districts around our state are in their first year of implementation of these changes, I'm proud to report that this is the fourth year for our school district for TIF schools and the third year for the remainder of our schools. And I'd like to commend the efforts of Kathleen Sundell, our Association President for Licensed Staff, and former Assistant Superintendent Mary Caddis for being out front in this work. Our district was definitely a leader across the state. I'd like to also thank Director Brantley and Coordinator Brett Cheever and members of the design team for their work also in leadership in our district. New in the 2014-15 school year, our TIF schools, there are 10 of these, join our other schools in the A-B cycles. So we originally rolled out the Legends process with six mini observations for all teachers. And a year ago, all schools except TIF schools went to an A-B cycle where some teachers received six observations in an A year and in their B cycle year received three observations. This year, that's been modified through staff feedback in our yearly surveys to include four observations in the A cycle year and two observations in the B cycle year. Also new are five additional specialist rubrics. And not to make Kathleen a star tonight, but her leadership in this area, working with staff in specialist areas to revise and provide rubrics that fit the work that's being done by specialists has been extraordinary. We have a total of 17 rubrics in our district, counting the administrative rubric, but these five specialist rubrics are added to that list this year. Also new to our state, the Oregon Department of Education implemented changes to the Oregon framework, which included student goal setting. And so student learning goals for each teacher. So teachers now, in addition to their administrative observation cycle, also must set goals for the students in their classrooms that include students in their course or their entire class. So if I'm a fifth grade teacher, I might set goals for all of my fifth grade students. If I'm a secondary teacher, I might set goals for all of my algebra students or members of an entire course. The results of the student learning goals are combined with the traditional administrative evaluation process, and those are used to create a summative score or evaluation for each teacher. And this is a brand-new part of the process this year. As a continued focus this year, we continue to focus on developing capacity for all administrators and integrated reliability, the complex work of observing lessons, collecting evidence, analyzing lessons, providing feedback and helping teachers reflect on their practice. Something that we're very proud of is in addition to the work we're doing with administrators, we're also providing optional support for principals who want to take this work to their teachers so that teachers would also watch lesson videos, collect evidence as if they were the administrator watching the lesson. And so this is an exciting new part of our practice this year. As is the case with most of the work that we do in Salem Kaiser, again, we have a continuous improvement feedback loop. And so all teachers and administrators are asked to complete an annual survey at the end of the evaluation cycle. Here's a sample question. We've asked them a question about one component of the rubric. All staff members are asked about the entire process, individual components, and their experience in the evaluation process. That information is used to share with the design committee, and each year they use that information to inform any changes or improvements in the observation evaluation cycle in the upcoming school year. And that is our update on strategic plan number five. And I conveniently had Brett join me because he's my local expert in case you have any hard questions.
Okay, Jim and then Paul.
So one, first is a suggestion. If we could get the PowerPoint presentation, because I couldn't read any of that. Maybe it's just me and my age now, but I couldn't, I couldn't read any of that up on the screen.
It was like it wasn't focused.
If you could make sure that we...
Be glad to send it to you.
Yeah, if we could get those as the presentation's going, that'd be helpful. So you indicated, Ken, in your, in your presentation that we have 17 rubrics right now, which include, you know, teachers, a variety of folks. Do we have employees that are licensed within our system right now that we haven't created a rubric for?
And I apologize, I typically speak quite candidly. For most of our employee groups that have a specialty other than classroom teaching, we now have a specialist rubric for them. If their role is so far outside of the traditional teaching role that...
Like our coaches, like our instructional coach.
Exactly. And we have one for that example actually as well, for the instructional coaches, an English language acquisition specialists, which are a flavor of coach. For classroom teachers, regardless of what subject they teach, the core skills for teaching are the same, and so they utilize a general licensed rubric. We continue every year to solicit feedback from folks that are utilizing the rubric. And one of the questions that we ask, which was unfortunately very small in the PowerPoint, is did these indicators feel relevant given the role and position that you have? And we use that feedback with our design team to determine if additional rubrics are necessary. All of the 17 that we talked about up there, all of them came from that process. We started with one rubric and then tried to figure out where do these not fit and what can we develop that would be a better service to you. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and I would assume then Superintendent that, you know, as we get feedback, you'll go through that process and it may be discussed at pace, it may be discussed at your listening sessions with the employee groups, but there's an opportunity beyond just the survey for our associations and our employees to have input on it if they say, well, really, you know, I think a better evaluation tool of my skills as an ESL teacher in elementary school, you might want to look at these things. We're continuously updating and improving these models as we learn because Senate Bill 290 has only been in place for a while.
Yeah, the, for the specific feedback about the rubric, we have an advisory group that all that feedback goes to. In my communication groups, sometimes the topic will come up, like the SLGs is a big one, the student learning goals. So in those communications group, we're doing that feedback of, okay, let's get Brett to the communications group next time. So on this, but on the specific feedback on the rubric, that comes through that advisory committee structure.
Okay, thanks.
Our collaboration in this process, I wasn't really trying to embarrass Kathleen, but it really is a pride point, not just in our state but across our country. Our district was one of five school districts identified across our nation by Education First, which is a research organization who is doing research and trying to identify models across our country that other districts can learn from. And Salem Kaiser School Districts was one of five districts identified and will be included in a paper that will be coming out in the winter, and we'll be looking forward to sharing that with you.
And weren't we picked as one of, if districts were having a hard time picking which evaluation tool, didn't the Department of Ed put us up as a model for other school districts in the state to look at it and hopefully adopt that? So, I mean, it's great work and I want to make sure that it's a tool that's valuable and it's useful for our classroom teachers, it's useful for the administrators and their evaluators, but ultimately leads to higher student achievement, and it sounds like that's what we're doing.
And it is a process that's continually revised. I think it's important to know that they're living documents and each year it's been adapted and modified based on the feedback that we're receiving.
Great work.
Paul?
I'm curious about the change, the changes in the numbers, an A-B you said. This past year it was six and three, six in an A year and three in a B year, and now it's four in an A year and two in a B year. And so my question is, how do you determine who's in an A year and who's in a B year? That's one question.
So to answer that question to start off with, when schools first transitioned to the A and B cycle for their contract staff, and it's probably worth noting that that's, that's your contract employee, not probationary.
Right.
They were effectively given a list of their staff that had been arbitrarily 50-50 split between A and B.
Okay.
And then they were allowed to, with consultation with the teachers, make adjustments to that. From that point forward, they roll on an A-B cycle. So if I was a B, I become an A the next year and so on and so forth.
Is it conceivable that I could transfer to another school and fall in the other list and be a B for several years in a row?
No, your cycle follows you rather than the school that you're assigned to or the assignment.
So I could be an administrator and have all As one year and all Bs the next year under your scenario?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yes.
And then my other question is, what percentage of evaluations did you actually get completed on time?
So, that's a great question. I can tell you the vast majority were completed on time for 1314. The electronics tool by which we collect that data does not have a report, which immediately generates that information however, and since the question was raised immediately before the meeting, I don't have a statistical figure. I can certainly tell you though that the vast majority, and if I was just to speak in generalities, I would say well over 80%.
So the administrators were getting all six done, or all six and three done?
Correct.
But so now you're lessening their burden and going to four and two. But if they were accomplishing it before, why are we now shortening it? Because would more evaluation be better?
So, that's an excellent question.
I just am asking.
Absolutely. So that, when I just shared just now, that was not 100%. We were still potentially doing a disservice by not being able to complete all of those tasks in the same time, and we continue to increase the workload for our administrators and our teachers every year. Feedback from both groups, from administrators and teachers, was that a reduction in the number of observations with the flexibility to complete more if needed would be preferable to a large burden of observations every year. So our adjustments were made to meet the requests of both teachers and administrators.
And Brett, if I could follow up, there's also a piece of it that is meaningful evaluations, and if you get too many there like this, and while they can meet it, are they meaningful when they can only get there for 10 minutes? So, and the feedback came from both the teachers group and the administrative group that went to the advisory committee. Is that correct?
And these are minimums. And the other thing is that these are written observations, so the opportunity for that verbal coaching, which might be even more powerful, just being in the classroom and giving that coaching on the spot, wouldn't be included in the formal write-up, so.
Nancy?
I'm pretty sure last month when we were talking about Legends, I asked if we could see the document. It would be so helpful when we're having, this comes up at almost every meeting, it would be really helpful to just see a sample of, you know, some level, pick a grade and, or pick a class or something and show us what that evaluation tool looks like.
Maybe just the regular classroom teacher one.
Yeah. But also I had a question about the student goals. That seems to me, unless what you're asking for is, you know, at third grade, by the end of third grade, you know, the student will be, know their times tables and be able to write a paper with X paragraphs that's well thought out. You know, I don't teach, I don't know what the student goals would be like. But if, if you're looking at a classroom with even 25 students, if those goals have to be more specific than, you know, very individualized and very specific, I wonder how much time it takes for teachers to develop those goals. Are they very individualized or are they more generalized, like as a third grader, you learn X, Y, and Z?
You okay to answer, Brett? Go ahead.
Thank you. Two pieces, and I'm going to go backwards just a moment. Certainly I think there will be a way for us to provide a copy of that general licensed rubric. If anyone was ever curious as well, on the district website, all of the rubrics for all 17 of the specialty groups are available, and that's available to the public as well. They're available and public facing. So if there was any interest, we would certainly welcome any feedback or any input on those. Moving ahead now to the student learning goal piece. That student learning goal process, that's actually a statewide process that was rolled out by the Oregon Department of Education, and it affects educators around the entire state, not only in Salem Kaiser. As a district, we have adopted the policies as they're laid out by ODE. We haven't added any additional requirements on top of it. To your point regarding time however, you're absolutely right. Writing a meaningful goal for a large number of students in a classroom that's differentiated for each of those student outcomes is a time-consuming process. It's a new one for everyone in the state, and what we're looking at right now is how can we, not only how can we provide additional time if that's possible, and we know we can't create additional hours in the day, but how can we streamline the process of looking at that data that we have on our students and make it available in a timely manner for teachers so that it isn't as time-consuming? So how can we build in time to do it, and then how can we also make it as fast as possible when they write them?
And if, if goals are written for students and the students don't meet those goals, is, is there anything punitive to the teacher if the goals aren't met?
So I would hesitate to use the word punitive. Under the state's guidance that they have laid out right now, we report in aggregate, so not on a teacher-by-teacher basis, but on a school and site basis to the state of Oregon every year for generally how successful we were in meeting those goals. That information is used for state reporting on how the student learning goal process is being completed because that's a requirement of the state's waiver to the federal Department of Education. And then that information is shared with building principals who then use that to determine to what degree they will collaborate with the educators on writing their next year's goals for the student learning goal process. There's not an impact on the evaluation document itself, the rubric that we're familiar with or any of those elements.
Thank you.
Chris?
I just have a couple comments based on questions that have been asked that I think will help from my perspective. The first is, Jim, you said that Senate Bill 290's only been around, you know, a year or so and therefore...
Three or four.
Yeah, that you were worried about that thing. I'll just remind you that we've been working on this now in Salem Kaiser for pretty close to five. And so the revisions that we're seeing every year that we're working on are not related specifically to 290, they're related to the process, which happened to be very, it just dovetailed into 290 beautifully, and we did have, the SLGs have made a big shift in things. And the thing that I would just respond to Nancy's that I think helps a little bit is that those SLGs don't have to be for large groups of students. If a teacher is specifically targeting a, let's say they're working with a group of ELL kids, and they want to write a goal that says, my ELL kids will perform in this way, they can narrow their goal down to that, that group and therefore really focus on one set of strategies that they have for a year, and the next year they may do special ed kids or whatever. But it doesn't have to be, all of my kids are going to do all of this, they can be fairly specific about their SLGs.
Any other questions or discussion on this report? Okay, I see none. Thank you, Ken, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the last of the reports tonight. Next is information items. You have your calendar there on the next page of upcoming meetings. Please hold all those dates still. Audience communications on non-agenda items is next. We, we have three people signed up, and you've each signed up to discuss a personnel issue, and we do not, we do not take public testimony on personnel issues in the boardroom. We will have board members around after the meeting. If you want to talk to individual board members, that would be fine, but because of confidentiality, we do not take testimony on personnel issues. So is there anybody who wanted to speak on a non-agenda item that's not personnel-related that didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, seeing no one, we'll...
Just a moment, is that, so is that workable, so you don't talk about personnel issues in particular, but...
We consider personnel issues confidential issues, so we don't, we don't take testimony in a public meeting on personnel issues, specific personnel issues.
You even have to teach your way of...
Tonight, we're not taking, we have no, we have no way to take that testimony tonight. Okay? Thank you. Okay, next we have board reports on activities in the last month or so. Anybody have anything they want to share? Anybody have anything they want to share? Chris, and then Paul.
I just want to, I've had several things, just starting with the most recent, I represented us at the Chamber Luncheon yesterday, and it was fascinating. I sat next to a gentleman I've known for several 15, 20 years who owns Emery &amp; Sons and Stettler Brothers, and we got started talking about the CTE, and the more we talked, the more animated he got, and I saw some real enthusiasm starting to come along with him, and I just wanted to say that every place I go where I start talking about that process, I, that same kind of animation comes into the other person. There's a lot of excitement about it, a lot of interest in the potential of what we can do with that kind of a program. So that's one. I spent last Friday and Saturday at the OSBA conference, and I just want to report that I went to about seven or eight different presentations, and every one of them will solve all of our problems. That's what's interesting about those things in that if you went back and really analyzed what you were told by all seven or eight of those people, some of their are very much in conflict with one another. But that's, I suppose, what a good conference does for you, is it just provides a lot of different ideas for you to be thinking about. I did get a really neat presentation on a new staff compensation model they put together out in Ben Lepine, and I know Kathleen knows all about that, and I, it was just very interesting, and I, and a sort of a fun one was, I went to a presentation from the folks in Hillsborough, which is where Steve Larson went, who we all know started here, or didn't start here, but was here before he went up there. And their presentation was primarily how they have taken what we do here and have been doing here for 10 years and have now implemented that in Hillsborough and what amazing things it's accomplishing. So I just walked away feeling all that much better about what we're doing. They have taken it a step further than us, and they actually, this is for the board, they actually have started using some of the kinds of feedback they're getting from their principals and their principal evaluation model in board reports, which speaks to the work we're going to start in January, I think, and that was sort of fun. So anyhow, I was a, I thought it was a very good conference because, as I say, I came away with all sorts of different ideas. The last one, I think, is really germane to us, and that is, I went and heard Duncan Wise and John Topanga talk about financing education and what they think's going to be in the governor's budget in terms of a whole new way of looking at how we finance education. And I have to admit, I was very split coming out of there because they are firmly committed that there is a business way of looking at schools where you can motivate schools and incentivize schools through finances, which I'm just not convinced, having been in schools for 40 years, works every time. And so I think it's interesting that we have this whole state way of looking at it coming down the pike, which I am skeptical about. But it was a good presentation, it was a very interesting, I think I have a pretty good picture of what the governor's thinking about where we go with finance. So if anybody's interested, be glad to share that with you.
Thanks, Chris. Paul.
I'll let Chuck go first. You know, I had similar experience to Chris. I was at the OSBA conference too and attended many very good sessions and picked up a lot of great information. But I think one of the things that, you know, I'd just like to acknowledge was Dave Harvey and SEDEXO had a great reception. It was really well-attended, and I think it speaks highly to the role that SEDEXO has in the education community. The other thing that was really impressive is Garrett Heeman again had another great reception. I did more than just go to receptions, by the way.
Right next, they were right next door to each other.
But they were the two main events in the evening on Friday night, and I thought it was just unique that they both are important partners, both Garrett Heeman and SEDEXO with our school district. So like Chris, I saw a lot of great things. Chris and I had a chance to sit down and talk about CTE a little bit too, he's the board member that represents, or he's the board liaison to the CTE Steering Committee, so I was able to update him on some things too. So I was time well-spent, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to go. Also had a chance to watch our superintendent in action at a chamber advisory board meeting. She did a beautiful job of talking about the district and the goals and kind of where she was coming from with her first meeting with many business people in our community. And I serve on that basically as a member of the chamber too, but she did a great job, and it was great to see a lot of our local businesses and their high interest in what's happening within our school district and support. So that was well-done. And then finally, again, I continue to be amazed at SKEF and their Crystal Apple Award. It's just a beautiful evening, and it's just so great to see our teachers and support people, especially this week when we're celebrating our support people. We had so many that were honored with a crystal apple that night, and Tom Hewitt was incredible. And so it was just a great night for our school district, I thought, as far as building community and kind of focusing on all the great things that are happening in our district.
Thanks, Chuck. Paul.
I would echo what Chuck said about the crystal apple. It was a very nice event, and I saw Chuck at a reception there, as I remember. Receptioning, reception, Chris as well.
I was there too, yeah.
Reception night. The other thing, being on the SCATS board, the chariots are celebrating 35 years in Salem, they're having a reception. And if anybody's interested, I have that information.
Pass it on to Chuck.
I'll be there.
I would like to say that I need, where's the camera at that I'm on right now? I need to see one, that one right there, hi. I need to say hi to my four new best friends, Miriam, Essie, Mara, and Brooke. They're from Yoshikai Elementary School, Yoshikai tonight. We had formal lunch together, and if you get a chance to do that, it is a wonderful event. And I was told I was the nicest grandfather in the room. And that, gee, they didn't realize old people could get, could come to school and see them like that. So it was still a very nice event.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? All right. Superintendent's comments.
All right, so here's my favorite thing about the crystal apple, is how still the North Salem kids, the ROTC kids stood in the cold for how many hours they stood. And what I've, you know, if you think about how the younger generation of educators operates, I don't think we always think about that, but I had more selfies with kids and young educators that night than I've had probably in my entire life. So I might be able to give myself a selfie now with them. So it was a great night, and I just want to remind us that what the crystal apple does for us, and thank you, Karina and SKEF for this, is it not only gives us to really intentionally honor not only the crystal apple winners, but the other, you know, all 56 of them who are honored. So it gives us a chance to intentionally honor them, but it also gives our community a chance to see fabulous educators and what they do for kids. And if you only hear the 12 stories, the 12 stories alone are really powerful, and I would encourage us to be sure that we get community members who aren't in our schools all the time, invite them to the crystal apples with, because that's the second reason, is our community has really a lot to be proud of. And yes, there were 12 that got the crystal apple, but I am pretty sure there were about another 44 that deserved the crystal apple as well. So thank you to Karina, and also thank you to Mary, who runs, Paulson, who runs the selection process for that. On the subject of CTE, we did, we, not we, but I guess in this case it would be SKEF who was awarded $150,000 from the Oregon Community Foundation. So it's our first big contribution to the CTE Center. So yay to, for Chuck and his effort, and that will go a long ways in beginning to get a lot of that equipment, and is a real good jumpstart for their fundraising efforts. At some point, we'll bring to you the logo for the new CTE Center, and we'll keep you in the loop. People have asked about the paving that's going on out there. Yes, that's part of the project, but they're working on the exterior and all of that right now. So there is stuff going on out there. Next, I wanted to just make a quick mention that this is Kelly's first night as official night as Assistant Superintendent, and Kathleen's first official board meeting night as Director of Secondary Ed. It has been an amazingly smooth transition to what I was a little, feeling might be a little bumpy, so thank you to Kelly and to Kathleen for the extra work in this transition as Salam has gone. And, you know, we are missing him, but he's deep in his work at the Higher Ed Coordinating Commission. And then the other thing that has been really great is we've launched our PACE Committee. We've spent a full day together with ASKESP, SKEA, and Administration, and the feedback I've gotten so far is that we are really tackling some meaningful topics while addressing ongoing issues. So we're working on staff recruitment and retention and professional development with PACE. So we have a number of reports we're generating and all of that. And then also I've started my communication meetings, and that's been a good reach-out with staff, so that's really an important with both classified and licensed staff, those communication meetings. So lots going on as we approach the holidays as well. That's my report.
Kristy, I like the way you solved that math problem, 56 minus 12 is 54, 44. See, I can't even do.
Forty-four, 56. Got it.
And I've heard that it's your birthday, happy birthday today.
Oh, well, thank you. Thanks. I try to fly under the radar for that stuff, but.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.